Crop certainly changed. Crop certainly changed in a week since I was here.
We're back.
Okay. Okay, uh, let the record reflect that no decision was made in closed session. And then we will go ahead with a motion regarding the C A G D C settlement agreement.
Do you have the resolution and the number for it?
Um, so this doesn't show, this is just an agreement?
Yep.
It doesn't show a resolution?
It'd be the resolution that we would actually approve. That's in our folder.
Oh.
That's in the file.
Yeah.
It's a Word doc?
Yep, okay.
Do we need that printed out? Okay.
Here, we can vote on it though.
Yep.
Yep, okay, this'll be... Would this be resolution oh nine oh nine twenty-five oh one?
I would not approve the resolution.
Motion by Stecker to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Second by Wachter. Any discussion on the resolution? If not, roll call vote please.
Howes?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Take a break, okay. Yeah, we can take a quick break before we go into drainage. Thanks, Todd.
Have a good rest of the day.
Thanks.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks, Todd. Um, probably me and Tony.
All right, take a break.
This is on the desk. I didn't read it.
No? Oh.
I just opened it and I, yeah.
I don't think that belongs to me. You think that belongs to you? Thank you.
Yeah. Which is kinda odd.
I know.
Get these up while we're...
Taking a break? Sounds good. Thank you.
The, uh, the nine fifteen, it looks like that's plan and specs that we anticipate that taking?
I just been filing a report after, so I didn't know if I should, if it'd be beneficial to stick around or if it's... Because I, I originally thought it was a hearing, but I see it's just plan and specs, so it may just be faster to.
Oh. Yeah, I don't know if we need to stick around or not.
I'll, I'll see how it...
I don't imagine there'd be much for discussion, but... Oh, when you go on vacation and you come back and you get a thousand emails and...
It's, uh, I, I liken it to, um, giving, uh, giving the trash, the trash collectors a day off.
Uh-huh.
Like, you could tell them, yeah, sure, we're not picking it up today, but it doesn't mean that it's not being made.
Uh, exactly.
So it's, you know, yeah, we don't have to play a game tomorrow, we're just gonna play two, we're just gonna play two the day after, you know?
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
It's always, it never fails that that's how it, uh...
Decap meeting for the first time in my, in my term here.
Really?
Next Monday.
Oh, that's exciting.
Yeah. I just saw the email for that. They, well, there was one other one, but they sent the email like two days prior and I never saw it and they had the meeting and, uh, okay.
Should check your email every thirty seconds.
I didn't, I know.
Figure that out.
I know.
I go on vacation and I actually have to like have someone else babysit my phone, or I just, I sit and I'm like, what's, what's happening? What's going on?
It's hard, it's hard.
What are they doing at the office? I should be doing something there with them. I, the meeting to call you back.
Yeah.
Um, Idells would be more than happy to have conversations, meetings with any sort of concerned...
Okay.
Parties, uh, not just on this, but ever on...
Okay.
So...
So what should we do to set that up?
Uh, you, it, do you have, you have the landowners' contact, right?
I do, yes.
Um, and maybe before I leave, I could, um, I, either, I think either if one of us just spearheads it, it's gonna be better than trying to...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Telephone.
Yeah.
So whether you'd like to, I can leave you the engineer's contact for Idells.
Okay.
Uh, or I can take the landowners' information and just...
Do you wanna be involved in the conversation? I mean, I think you should be, or...
I, I mean, I could be ultimately. It's a, it's a Ducks Unlimited design through Idells.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if, I reviewed it for, uh, purposes in the district, so I am at that level involved.
Okay.
So I, I more than, more than, uh, comfortable being involved for, for that out, you know, that maybe outside presence there.
Well, I kinda feel like you're gonna know your schedule. I don't wanna schedule something for you.
Okay, yeah.
But I can pretty much make something work as long as I have some leave time, if you want me to give you, um, Tim's phone number.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, I have no problem doing it, but I don't wanna schedule.
Oh, no, I, I, I'm perfectly fine. Tip of the spear, absolutely.
Okay.
I didn't, I just didn't wanna step on you. I didn't wanna step in your way.
Oh, no, 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 I just want to be able to be so peace happy and that's all I want.
And, and, uh... I'm sorry, a little bit about the delay, but where it was in coordinating is that they're, they aren't currently building out there.
I don't know about that, but yeah.
It's just, um, design, it's all theoretical at this point.
Sure.
And so it sounds like there are a couple of irons in the fire as far as the pouring glass that's...
I don't know.
...inside his house. We're circling back around. Nothing, nothing has been done yet.
That's very true.
Um, and it does appear that he is gonna have the majority drained to that, so by all rights, who would be concerned about this?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I can text you his number. And I'll ask, I'll actually too, I'll reach out to him today and say that you may be reaching out to him, schedule something and...
Awesome.
I'd rather have it be on your schedule than...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, okay. Hey, this is too happy. Okay.
I also don't want that to be entirely a hot lady there being...
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Understand.
Thank you.
It's always too high when I first get in here and it's like I hold back.
I can keep on sitting it and raise it up. Probably. Okey-dokey. Morning, Joe.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Like, we got, we got the bid letting and then we need to... Do that first.
Okay, okay, yep, that sounds good. Okay. We're gonna go to our nine o'clock, since it's after nine o'clock. Uh, we have our discussion, decision for bid consideration for Idell's Lusher Saturated Buffer Project.
Yes, good morning all.
Good morning.
Uh, coming back now, we have checked the, the tabulation. There was the one bid received a week ago on the Idell Saturated Buffer Project. This is one that was being done through the twenty-eight E agreement between the county and the Iowa Department of Ag and Land Stewardship for, uh, essentially using the county's expertise when it comes to, uh, the review and oversight on drainage projects. This is, uh, in utilizing existing drainage structures to, uh, apply a saturated buffer to it. But with that being said, there is no, uh, financial expectations from the county or from any of the drainage districts. So, um, with that being said, we tabulated the bids, checked the math, everything was good on that. The bid from Ritzel's Excavating was one hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred ten dollars and zero cents. The engineer's estimate was one hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and zero cents. That bid was given to Idells for their consideration. There was a, an affirmative sent back from, uh, Matt Lichtenberg with Idells that, uh, was giving the approval and recommendation for, um, moving for, acceptance and moving forward with the contract documents. So, that, uh, there is the tabulation attached as well for what that, uh, bid came in at. So, with that, it is also then my recommendation that the award go to Ritzel's for the bid amount. Move forward with the contract documents.
What's the timeline on the project or what's the, do you know anything for what's expected to be done there?
As, as far as timeline, I, I don't, and even the, even the completion... I, I believe so. Even the, even the completion date at this time kind of escapes me, but...
I was just curious.
Yeah, sorry, I, I don't...
Not my biggest concern.
I look at all of the, the specifics on that, but, uh... I believe that's the, the anticipation is yet this fall. We're, we're getting down to about the right timeframe where if we get the contracts in place and pre-construction meetings, we're gonna be, uh, avoiding a lot of... A, a lot of, uh, harvest and undue crop damages. I mean, at this point, there's no sense in running down a bunch of, bunch of crop that you're just as likely going to, uh, harvest, sorry. Any other questions?
This isn't, is, is this an inter-district?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the very tail end of, of a system, yes. It, it is utilizing an, a tile main outlet, but it is not, it's running along a, a channel that is not a district ditch, so it's just a natural creek that's outletted. Again, this is a, it'd be a drawdown that any low flows that are, that would naturally drain out of the system are being captured and fed through these saturated buffers. Any larger flows or anything that that saturated buffer can't take, outlets just as small.
Need a motion? Need a motion by Garmin to... Okay, second by Stecker. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nice. Motion carries. Okay, and then... We gotta wait for nine fifteen for GD twenty?
I, I was, well, I...
Can you talk about it?
This is a, this is just a filing for a report. I could start, maybe I could squeeze it in before a call comes in, I'd...
Oh, for GD twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the filing of the report.
Is it while you're here?
Yeah.
No, it's after the nine fifteen on the agenda.
It's listed after on the agenda, but is there anything that we have to do with it?
Well, just set a date and time for the, for any potential hearing on it. Um, this one's a, a little unique and I can get into it. There was a petition, just as I hand these out, there was a petition filed for, uh, the improvement of the outlet of the south main of Drainage District Number Twenty that drains into the Union Slough, which is a part of Drainage District Number Eighty. I believe both were listed on the petition, but it's really the outlet of the south main of GD twenty that we are looking at. There was a desire to increase that to the one-inch drainage coefficient. There was a, um, review of that capacity, the system, DD twenty being both a north main and a south main. Again, we're looking at the south main. It's attached a couple of aerial photos of the district as well. This is almost exactly due east of Bancroft. The portion more specifically that was petitioned for is on the very last page. It was essentially between the, the, what is described in the report as the boundary line and the outlet ditch that drains to the Union Slough. It's approximately sixty feet worth of, worth of tile there. That is, uh, a thirty-six inch CMP existing right now that is outletting into the channel and, uh, believed to be a thirty-six inch plastic up from that, the, the other forty feet to the existing junction box. That junction box then receives a number of, of tile into it from, from that point up. The grade of that line was found to be approximately two point four percent, which is rather steep for, um, the drainage tiles that we more typically see. The acres that that is serving was found to be approximately one thousand eight hundred thirty-five. From that, looking at the existing capacity of the system, this was taking into account the submerged outlet, the material types, and the grade. The existing, um, even at its submerged conditions, it's calculated to be zero point six three inches per day of capacity. Uh, again, inches per day being the drainage coefficient, the amount of water that could be drained off the landscape in a twenty-four hour period of time. That was compared to a number of different scenarios that would, um, change what those capacities were. When the outlet is submerged, as this one is, uh, there's a difference between equations that are used, one for submerged and one for a free-flowing full pipe capacity. That's the difference in the table between the Manning's equation is, is very good at simulating what full flow tile conditions are. The Bernoulli's equation is what is better used when there is either an outlet or you're dealing with submerged flows. Bernoulli's deals a lot more with your, your pressure availability. And at the outlet, of course, that pipe's not flowing full. It does have that, that drawdown effect at the end, which is limiting in its capacity. So that's why those two are, are used and listed for what those, um, capacities would be. That was also compared to the upstream best theoretical drainage district facility. The plat shows that the south main continues as a twenty-two inch at a zero point six percent grade. That was compared to the LIDAR surface at, uh, of that area. I think that that's a very generous slope. I'm not entirely sure that that could be naturally achieved in that district, but that would be the, the greatest capacity that this could theoretically carry, calculated to be zero point one eight inches per day. So, that being said, the, the outlet does appear to be, uh, rather significantly compensating for the amount of drainage that it's being asked to handle. The, the district's, um, the upstream capacity is smaller than what that outlet sixty feet is able to carry. It seems sufficient at this time. However, I have gotten, um, verbal confirmation from the representation at the Union Slough that if there is a desire to do a district tile improvement into the Union Slough's ground, that would be entertained. However, uh, entertained and allowed, however, there is not at this time, um, any interest in changes to that downstream channel, widening, deepening, making more uniform, or in any way dropping the water level in that, that channel. So, there would be difficulties, potential difficulties in, or still potential, um... You, you wouldn't likely be able to, even with a larger pipe, get a true free-flowing outlet with the elevations that, that are allowed there without sacrificing some grade or some cover. The closest then, um, to the one-inch coefficient that I calculated you could get was if you replaced the thirty-six inch plastic, the forty feet of that with forty-two inch pipe and replaced the outlet CMP with a forty-eight inch twenty-foot segment of pipe to get the one-inch drainage coefficient. Um, that would of course require that the manhole structure that those connect to be retrofit to allow for the, the larger-sized tile. And I can, it's nine fifteen, I don't know if you'd like me to pause there or if someone's calling in, or I can, I can keep going.
Can we use the conference?
We'll have to call Palo Alto County.
Yeah, we probably should do that fairly soon. Um, anything else that you could add quick or not much else?
Uh, with, with the improvements, as, as always, there's, um, the potential for additionals that come with that. If the, um, such as if the cost of the improvement is more than twenty-five percent of the original district establishment, it requires reclassification. If there is, uh, a need for a public hearing on, on this, there's, because it's an improvement, it would follow the, the remonstrance, uh, requirements. And I have, I have attached what is my best estimate for a, for a, an improvement cost on this. It's, it's such small quantities that it is difficult for me to, to say with any certainty the confidence on that. It is, uh, estimated at, I have that estimated at fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. That relies pretty heavily on the manhole structure being able to be retrofit and not completely replaced, uh, as those themselves could cost that amount of money. So it's, it's, uh, it's such a small thing that it's difficult to put estimates to only doing sixty feet of pipe. I do truly believe that this would be more economically done at the time that it would be more substantially required uh, by, by way of, uh, additional improvements upstream of that that would require the capacity of that outlet to be increased. Like everything, there's a, there's an economy of scale that you could get better doing larger segments of pipe rather than just improving sixty feet at the outlet.
I know it's in your report about wetlands and all that stuff, I mean, that'd be something we'd wanna talk about at the here.
There's always the potential for that as well. It, it's some, anytime that I try to make a, an estimation on what would and would not, um, uh, convert a wetland, it seems that I've made the wrong call. So, it, it's always, it all, it's very situationally dependent and improvements run that risk.
Do we have a date in mind for what word?
Uh, let's see.
Yeah, Joe, you have a question back here?
Joe, you have a question?
Uh, you said there's only a thousand acres and I went and looked at the assessment schedule. It looks like they have like, uh, and I'm, I'm, I don't remember the surface correctly, but I know just on the, on, uh, the main tree there's nine hundred acres.
You said eighty thousand, what is, uh...
You said eighteen hundred.
Yeah, nine thousand eight hundred thirty-five.
Okay, that sounds right.
For the...
Yeah, I, I didn't agree with anything.
It's in the bottom of the first page.
Yep.
Uh, I, we did not talk about a date. Uh, it would need to be at least forty days from the acceptance of the report. Uh, so that would put us out to, that would put us pretty squarely in October, and I don't know as that that's a great... I mean, I don't think I wanna do that.
We can do it for mid-November?
I don't know if, possibly the November eleventh?
That's, we're not open because of Veterans Day.
Okay.
I will...
But we would be having a meeting the twelfth that week.
Oh, we are, okay.
Yes.
And I am open the, I am open the twelfth.
Sorry.
Consider yourself told.
Sorry, sorry, I'm letting you know. Yeah. Um, because we have to have the canvas of election, so that's why.
Okay.
This is Josh in the boardroom. Okay, uh, we're finishing up something here real quick. Uh, I'm just gonna put it on speaker then.
Our wedding's the fifteenth, then I'll be gone after that, at least the next two, two weeks.
Uh, this is Josh, uh, in the Fisup County boardroom. Um, we're just kinda finishing up a couple of things here, um, and then we'll be...
Okay, you wanna call, you wanna call us back on our conference line?
I think we can just do it quick.
We're just gonna set a date, so...
Yeah, we're just gonna set a date for a hearing real quick. Um, do you need us to change phone lines so that you can hear us better or something? Or are we okay where we're at now?
We're okay.
Okay, perfect. We'll be with you in a second.
Yep.
November twelfth.
Okay, you set, set a date for November twelfth, time?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, is that good? Nine o'clock?
Okay.
Okay, so date and time for, uh, November twelfth, nine AM.
I'll make that motion, acknowledge the report and set the date.
All right, motion by, uh, motion by Stecker.
I'll second.
Second by Wachter. Any discussion on that date and time? If not, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, thanks Tyler.
November twelfth, nine AM, all right.
You got it.
Got it. Have that conversation win.
Okay.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
Real quick, PJ, Joe.
Yeah, so you had said that, um, it's the last sixty foot going up to the junction box?
Yes.
And the question there might be is...
After the junction box, after the junction box to the slough.
Yeah, after the junction box to the slough.
Yep.
Forty-foot plastic to twenty-foot CMP, so it doesn't catch fire with the burn it.
Correct.
So, a problem, uh, could arise of retrofitting a forty-two inch outlet to a box that might have only been built except a thirty-six.
Correct.
So is it dumb to think about upgrading the box at this time? Just because if you said there's only a point one eight coefficient...
This, this, this is kind of a different subject, so if you could visit with Tyler maybe and we'll...
Do you mind talking out here?
We got a, we have a conference line that we're on with another county at the moment.
Oh, all right.
Yep. Okay, good, good morning, this is Board of Supervisors. Can you hear us in Fisup County? We're ready for you.
Okay. Is Colin there?
Colin is not here.
He said he was not going to be here today.
Is he calling in or is he with you guys?
No, he said he wasn't gonna be available at all today. That's why he gave all the information.
Okay.
Don, Don. Don, you might closing the door, just pull the door shut there.
Could you close the door shut, Don, please? Okay, well, I, I did visit with Colin a couple of weeks ago and...
They're talking.
Oh. Oh, I didn't hear him.
We can't hear you guys very well. What are, what's going on?
No, well, I need for you guys to go ahead and start the conference call for P I K one.
Are we, are we not on the conference call or... Are we, are we not on the conference call or?
Yes, are you ready?
Yeah, we're ready, you want a motion to open the meeting or something or?
No, we don't, I don't need that. All you have to do is set a hearing date to accept the business plan and set a bid letting date for September thirtieth at eight oh five, I believe, is when we're doing the bid letting, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Do you guys have any concerns over that?
Nope.
Okay, anyone wanna make a motion?
I, I, okay, I'll make a motion to set that bid letting and accepting the plans and specs of, uh, was it September thirtieth at eight oh five AM?
Right, correct, perfect.
Who who made the motion open?
Carter now.
Carter, okay.
Do you guys have a full board?
Yes.
Okay, we do as well.
Okay, there's a motion.
Is that gonna be in Cassup County? For bid letting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do that here in our boardroom.
Okay, we'll call in.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Any discussion on the date and time?
Nope.
Okay, uh, all in favor then of approving that date and time, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, all ayes here.
Yep.
Okay, motion carried then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're based on the three. Okay. So, we are gonna go back then? Right, let's go back to drainage discussion decision to review and approve our drainage policy.
Okay. So, I did have a landowner stop yesterday and wanted me to mention, um, that he would like added to the policy something stating that all trustees should know what's going on in each drainage project regardless if it's in their district or not. And the reason that he feels that way is because when it's time to vote, each of you has a vote. And he thinks that in order for you to make a
Informed.
Informed vote, you should know what that project is and what's going on. So he think, he he wants something added to the policy that communication on all drainage projects needs to be handled throughout the board and not just that person that's that's in that, that supervisor in charge of that district. So that was just a suggestion he wanted me to mention today.
Who was that, his doctor?
Maurice Alzberger. Maurice Hatton, can never say his name.
Okay.
Um, otherwise, um, I added and changed what we talked about last week.
What did you talk about last week?
Talking about you being.
Yeah. You didn't watch it, Carter?
I have not watched it since eleven o'clock last night.
Um, okay, so we added number ten. GPS coordinates from start to finish are required on all drainage repair requests. GPS points need to be added before an invoice is paid. Um, we added number eleven, private trustee drainage assessments must be submitted to the Cassup County Auditor prior to April thirtieth. The assessment request must be approved by resolution and signed by the clerk and chairman of private board of trustees.
Are one and two different as well? Is that, was that kind of the main subject of conversation there?
Um, yeah, number one, um, change date to they must fill out and sign the drainage repair request in person at the auditor's office.
And it has to be the landowner?
Yes, or the tenant, uh, or the tenant.
Okay, and then the repair over ten thousand?
Does that vary from, somebody said once about time that anybody can fill out a request, but?
Yeah, I I have shared that a couple of times, um, that was the, I guess, legal advice we were given from Jim Hudson when asked about a repair request, I'd say that was probably
I guess.
Five plus years ago.
Sorry.
I was trying to think of date, but that's about it.
I guess the one thing I want to talk about, I did have some concerns from landowners who live further away. Um, I did kind of explain to him why I felt it was important for that to be signed in person and the main thing is because of that map. Um, the one, the complaint that I've heard consistently um, up to this point is that people feels, and and I have no idea if it's true, I'm just telling you what people feel, um, that they feel that sometimes private tile are being fixed. Um, so the only way to eliminate that is to make sure that every drainage request has that map and have it, has it pinpointed where exactly that repair is going to be. That repair needs to match whatever's put in that GPS coordinates. I I I do understand driving, you know, forty minutes, forty-five minutes to an hour to come and sign that request, I understand that. I also understand that I feel like things have become a little bit lax and that drainage repair request form is the very first thing that sets that paper trail for any repair. That's why I feel it's important to have absolutely every little bit of information on that repair form as possible. Um, I don't want it to be common practice that people just call in, but I, but if that is the case, maybe they still need to put something behind that by maybe a picture like, say I live in Sway City and I have a problem and you, I tell you it's in section eleven of whatever, and you find that on the map, the drainage map, take a picture of it, send it off, as long as they can pinpoint exactly where that problem is so that you can put it on the map and attach that with the request, I would be okay with that. I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but I feel it's important, it it has to be, it has to be on that map. We have to ensure that the tile being fixed is county tile. And there has been times when people have come in and they have looked at the map and they have said where it was and there was no county tile there. Um, if people are just calling in and just saying, you know, and it's not caught, well, something like that could happen. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, doing our best to make sure that everything that we put forward is accurate and well researched. And that's my opinion on that, so if if you guys want to feed off of that, whatever, I do understand the time concept and the drive, I get all of that. But it is these landowners that are going to pay these bills. And that's why, why I think it's very important for them to be able to mark on that map where that problem is and tell us, oh, it's flagged with a, a red flag, or it's marked with a stake, or whatever it may be, those are important things to know.
I agree with probably most, if not all, of what you just said. And I do know there has been time, so it's been brought to my attention that this tile's been fixed for all these years and I pulled it up on the map and said there's nothing in that area. And, um, I think whether it's filled out on the repair request map or put in GPS coordinates in our electronic map, I guess, I think both are good to some extent, but I think the GPS coordinates are the dominant and prevailing piece of information in that equation because that's an exact physical location of where it is. I mean, when I'm out in the field and you hold your phone, depends on service, it can vary by the day, by cloud cover, whatever. But typically, if you have good service in the middle of the field, the, the program will show a GPS accuracy and it usually with good service, it's about fifteen feet, sometimes more, sometimes less. But if we have coordinates within fifteen feet of where a repair was made on our electronic map, I I feel pretty comfortable with that and I think that.
But we have to have good information that comes in on the repair request in order to get that GPS point. And we're not gonna have farmers just sending us GPS points, that's never gonna happen.
No, the farmers don't do that, that's.
That's the trustees.
That's the trustee or the contractor that would put that.
But we have to have that information on the repair request in order for you to find that point, I mean, how else are we gonna get that?
After, and that's after it is done. That's after the repair is done.
I mean, like, you're both right in that if you find out after the fact, you you would find out after the fact, but then, then you're gonna have a brouhaha, who who pays?
Right.
So you you'd prefer to have that information. You you prefer to, you're saying you prefer to, everybody's right, it's just how how it's gonna be applied and and.
We absolutely need to get away from whenever this past practice started of things not being marked on that map prior to putting a drainage repair request through. That is the first point of contact. That's where we ensure, is it in the road ditch, is it in the, uh, is it in the field, is it private, is it not? That's where we have that first point of contact so that we ensure that everything going forward then will be accurate. I am, I, I'm not going to approve any request that comes in here without it being on the map, marked on the map where it is.
On the map, on the repair request, yes.
Because then I know the auditor's office has looked at it, they have confirmed that's county tile, they've confirmed with, if it's a lateral, if the drain's been reclassified, then we know going forward that that billing's going to be accurate. There's, there's more, more to it than just, oh, it's just whatever, it's just gonna get done anyway. No, we need to make sure that the billing's correct. The billing can't be correct if that map doesn't take place first. And I, and I will not, I will know to every request that comes in here that doesn't have that on it from now on. I know I'm one person, but we need accuracy.
If I could make one comment. When we vote to approve drainage repair requests, it's not, you know, Josh or Kyle or whoever has a repair request, I'm not voting to go get work done on your repair request, Josh, I'm, we're voting, the the motion is that the supervisors handle their repair requests. And so, either we need to change how we approve them, because I'm not approving Josh's repair request. I mean, I'm approving him to take care of it, but that's not a guarantee that anything's gonna be done about it. That's, that's Josh's responsibility to go look at it, to go assign a contractor to it, et cetera, et cetera.
And it's also his responsibility to make sure it's a county tile, it's not a private tile.
Absolutely, and I've had that too, where you go out and look, exactly what Kyle said, you go out and look at something and landowner is insisting that, oh, I know this is a county tile and there's not even a county tile in the section, you know, it's just.
I, I could give you a couple examples of that.
That should be handled first. When that first initial request is, that, I remember doing it all the time. Like, if the drainage clerk wasn't there, I'd go in there and take a repair request and I'd be like, I'm sorry, there's no county tile here, I'm not gonna fill out the request. There's no reason for a request form to come in this boardroom that is not, that is private because we have access to those maps. There's no excuse for that.
And I don't, I don't have an example of any that have come in that I have said Farm County has, I've investigated them. I'm sure I could find some if I look back far enough, but I know I've gotten phone calls and someone said, hey, there's a washout out here given the general vicinity, and I pulled it up on my phone on the map and said, there's not a county tile within a half a mile of that, it's not even close. So those haven't been filled out, um.
Well, right, and that's the point, if they're filled out.
I remember had one fill it out that actually came into the office and said, can fill out a repair request and it came to the board, that ended up being a private tile, I've had one.
Yeah, I've probably had a couple, but I can't remember them specifically.
But typically, in the grand scheme of things, we, when they come in here, that first point of verification is in that office saying that it is a county tile, then it is up to us to handle that and go forward with what we have given to us.
It, and I don't have a problem with people forty, forty-five minutes away emailing us that information or sending us that information with the map on it. I don't have, we don't have any issues with that, um, and then signing them, you know, we we, we don't. It's the over the phone, not being able to get that information, um, that's an issue.
Well, and maybe, maybe an option would be just having the repair request filled out. I mean, not to say outside the office, but like if someone's in the north end of the county, if I have a stack of them in my binder that I carry around, if I go out and look at something, meet a farmer there, they could fill it out in field.
Well, and that actually was brought up yesterday, somebody said that Roger Jaxx used to have drainage repair requests with him and would have the farmer fill them out. But the problem with that is, do, does the supervisor have that information to verify? That it's, it's a county tile?
I do on my phone every single day.
You do, but does everybody else?
Everybody has the ability to have that. I mean, technology today is there.
I know the technology's there and I have no problem figuring out how to do, look it up on my phone and I do have one of the big maps at my house, I have no problem looking there, but the point of it is, who's paying the bill? The farmers are paying the bills. They need to, they they need to have some kind of a stake in it because then when, when it's assessment time and the assessments go out and somebody comes to counter and say, hey, what the heck, I got this assessment for DD four, what, what was all of this? They can pull it up, they can pull up their request, they can say where, exactly where it was and they can say, well, this was filled out by so and so. And that, and that's usually a very good way of handling it because then they say, oh, yeah, that's right. You know, typically, they remember that and they've already talked to their neighbor about it. So, I don't know, I just think it's good practice.
I bet in the last week to two weeks, we probably had twenty people come in asking about their assessments that wanted to know what was done, where the repair was, who requested it. You know, and then once they're given that information, oh, yeah, I remember that and they can expand on it. So, you know, and it has, we have the signed request from the person, you know, I mean, it's very, very, very helpful. And and then, then they understand, but they want to know.
They do want to know, and I think anything that we can do to improve that communication process, you know, and and we're viewed as more transparent on those things, not saying we haven't been viewed as not, but I'm just saying, anything we can do in light of communication and and showing the proof, here's what it is, to make that process easier, we should all be in favor for. Yeah, those, some of those assessments are big, so, you know, I I just, you know, we, I've I've heard often that laterals, a lateral should be, should have been charged and it wasn't. Okay, well, there you go, there's a key aspect of you mark it on the map, you see, oh, that one's reclassified, that's lateral nine, whatever. That is the first step of accuracy. It's the first step, why would we wanna, I'm sorry, I can't think of a better term, but I'm not gonna swear. You know, why would we want to do it halfway by not having that first piece accurate? I I don't understand why it would, why any of that would be a problem, but.
I, I don't think I have any disagreement with the need for accuracy and starting the process off with correct information, but the reality of the point of contact in any form, that there's an issue that needs to be taken care of and obviously confirming that it is county district facilities and getting it completed, the farther you are away from Elbona, the more inconvenience it is to come here to fill out paperwork.
I agree.
And that's just reality, and I've said that how many times, but that's.
And I do agree with that, and so then if we have the cooperation, the auditor's office and the drainage clerk, that they are ha, okay with that as long as there is something that comes to us with it marked exactly where it is, so when they go to fill out their request, they can find it and they can say, oh, yeah, that is county tile, that's right here. That, the only drainage repair request I filled out myself, then when a farmer has asked me, is because they have sent me a map on my phone. And I've been able to go in, look at the drainage map, confirm, okay, yep, that is a county tile. And and I had confidence in marking it on that drainage repair request because it was sent to me. So if that gives them confidence of ensuring that that first step is accurate, I'm okay with that. I I can make it in the middle, I understand, I understand the drive point, I do.
The only thing that I would ask for that is if we can, and I don't know if this is possible, I I don't mind the email or anything like that because we can always print out the email and attach it to the repair request, that's, that's not a huge thing, especially if they have pictures or anything like that. Is there a way to set up an email address though for them to send it into? Because instead of, I mean, I don't care if they send them to just me, but if I'm out for the. but if I'm out for the day or on vacation or something like that.
You're talking a shared mailbox?
Yeah, a shared mailbox. Is that possible?
No, no. We don't wanna do that.
Okay, and and I don't know, that's why I ask. That's that's why I ask.
That's a good idea, Tammy says so.
Okay, yeah, and 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 that's like I said, and that's why I ask questions.
No, we don't wanna do that.
Okay, that's a no.
I I think that would get cumbersome.
No, and that's, and that's like I said, that's why I ask these questions.
If they call the office first, they're gonna know you're gone.
Okay.
And they'll, they'll send it to Tammy or to whoever, they'll know you're gone. Um, the point of contact first is by a phone call, to know that, hey, I I wanna send this to you, and then they can be guided on what I email it to.
They they shouldn't be starting a request with an email.
Okay, and that's, and like I said, that's what I'm learning, so, yep, we're good.
So, can you tell me what what in the language actually changed here? Was it when a landowner has a repair request, the landowner slash tenant slash trustee, is that what it was before, or how how did that word before, I guess?
I don't think there was anything about trustee in there.
Was there, but I know that wording got changed somehow. How does that, how did that get changed?
Um.
I think it just said landowner.
When a landowner has a repair request, fill out and sign, or?
There was something small, like it it ju- it was just kind of vague and, yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was, it was just.
Pretty vague.
Yeah, it it. Most of it was, that was changed is in person, at the Cassuth County Auditor's Office.
Yeah, I think in person wasn't there.
So I don't.
I'm sorry.
Well, I I just was gonna say, I I don't know if we built this matching anything in the code or not. Um, I was on vacation, I didn't, but I did do a little bit of asking and and looking into how it fit with the code, and it it appears, and from what I understand, that anyone can turn in a repair request, um but it is up, I think the code words it as the watch person um for the drainage district, or i- is, I think they call it a watch person, um and in Cassuth County, that watch person is each supervisor for a drain, or for a, uh for a, separated into districts. Not every county does that, and I know, um, for example, Tyler with Bolton and Bank, he he is the watch person designated for Hancock, Seragordo, Boone and Story, so where every repair request that comes through that office, he actually goes out and verifies it, and and other people within the Bolton and Bank, you know, grand operations, we'll do that for other counties too, but.
Um, he personally does all those counties?
Yes.
Not a tag, he personally goes out?
I don't know if he pers- I guess, I don't know if he personally, but his office does. His office does, is, they designate as a watch person
There's.
for those counties, and I'm not saying that's what we should do, but but that's how the code, from what I understand, that's how the code is, is that we have watch persons and that's what verifies it, and so as trustees, I I think if you're kind of, I mean, we're being a little bit redundant in forgetting, we're already the trustee handling our own repair requests, we're getting GPS coordinates, I guess as long as the map is accurate and the information on the repair request is accurate, and we're verifying that information.
But we're, excuse me, I'm just gonna, I can't right back, but we're not, we're, it's rubber stamp, move on and send the contractor out there. None of that's happened.
I'm saying that as long as we get accurate information, then we should be able to, I mean, as a trustee, I just feel like I should be able to do that, or I don't wanna limit other people out in society from being able to do that.
Well, I I.
If the code allows for them to do that, that's all I'm saying.
I was just gonna say, you know, it could be where this is, the preferred method is um to fill out the request in person at the Cassuth County Auditor's Office. If if i- if that can't be done, you may call the auditor's office and then they will tell them what to do. You know, I don't know how specific we have to be, I mean, I think we can say that's our preferred method, um but I do feel we need something that's a first point. I mean, that's all good and fine, I know we're the trustees and I know we're we're verifying, but I I've always had a map on mine, so I'm, I guess, I thought that verification was already done in the auditor's office by proving that it was a county tile. So I haven't actually went in there and and verified that, well, you know, on the ones that I filled out myself for landowners, I did. But I, that was our first point of verification.
Yeah, I'd say that is the preferred method, um but if I have knowledge that, yeah, this is legit, I I guess, that's all my point is.
Yeah, and then we handle it, I give that, it's just how we handle it.
And I don't think you just put on the repair request, you know, broken tile fixed, broken tile fixed. I I mean, if that's as simple as it is, but yeah, you gotta put where it is, what happened, et cetera, phone number of the landowner, all that kind of stuff.
So I I can't speak for other board members, um as far as rubber stamping things and moving on, but when I have a repair request, if I've known about it in advance or not, at some point in time there, I'm guaranteed to have communication with the contractor or landowner or pole. And I can personally say for my requests that I've handled, those things have been verified, and I guess I'm not as fussy about having a picture on the map on the repair request, as long as the information on the top four billing purposes is correct. Because if something's already been done, say there's a washout in the field, you fix a s- small, simple hole, we already have a GPS coordinate on the map that correlates to that work that was done, we already, at that point, in that example, we would already have more accurate information on our electronic map than we could ever have on a handwritten drawing. So, I think the billing information for the drain, the lateral, all like, all that type of stuff is important to be correct and complete, so that when there's a bill associated with it, it comes in and is processed the right way. But the physical hand drawings that's outlined as rough drawings can't ever come close to as accurate as GPS points, and I don't, I don't think it needs to, because.
Yeah, that's. No, that's that's rough drawing.
Yeah, exactly, so I'm, I'm not, I'm trying to not get hung up on, we need to have the map filled out, as long as our billing information is correct, there's a description of the work, and all that, I I think our bases are covered.
The map ensures that that map was looked at. When you draw it on the map, it ensures that the person taking the request looked at that map and verified the drain and whether or not that drain was reclassified, and whether or not a lateral needs to be built, or just the drain in general. That's why that's important, it's just a verification. It doesn't mean that that's an exact drawing and, oh, okay, I'm gonna walk out to field and know exactly where that is. I don't think that's the purpose of it, it's a verification method, and I do think it's important.
And I always felt, I mean, there, with the drainage clerk, always fill out the map.
And I, you know, and, you know, I don't know for sure what Howard meant by the rubber stamp, but.
But who signs it?
You were worried about who signs it?
Yeah.
Well, if if it was me filling it out, then I signed it, or if it was a landowner filling it out, then he signed it, or whoever, but.
It should be the landowner signing it.
That's the discussion.
Yes.
Yeah. Can I sign a repair request? Currently, yes, but we're wanting to change that.
Yes.
The the reality is, I mean, I I've talked about conversations with attorneys, we could try calling Hudson right now if anybody wanted. Um, I don't know what his schedule's like, I haven't talked to him on this, I probably could have, maybe I should have, but at the end of the day, I don't think we can, nor that we should specifically limit it to, they always have to be here in person, because that's, I I don't think that is in line with the code, and I think there's a lot of good reasons to have the confirmation that our information's correct, but I think there's more than one way to get that confirmation.
I agree, and I think that's why an email from the landowner showing exactly where it is is helpful. It's helpful in that first verification process, because a request shouldn't come in here that hasn't been, that that isn't county tile. I mean, that's that, that's just, that's my main point of this whole thing, is to ensure that our first step is as accurate as it can be. So going forward, that continues. It's my only point.
People forget too, you know, oh, I don't remember requesting that, and they see their signature, oh, yeah, I did do that. If they see Carter's signature.
Yeah, that's, there's some truth to that too.
No, I went and looked at it with them, I would assume they remember that, but.
I mean, most of the time I get a text or whatever too, so I mean, there's.
Oh. I I take it back, there's been two requests. Don had one, and we went and looked at it, and that was ended up being a private deal, so we didn't, we didn't ever fix anything on the county tile, because it, when I cl- came out there the one day for, in that junction box, we never fixed anything, cause it was a private issue.
I never had a request.
You filled one out.
Yeah.
That was my point.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Well.
Don, did you have any thoughts?
You were on here for twenty years.
I have something that's kinda unique. Twice, I ran across, both would be in your district or where there were, the drainage district did a new tile, and they did not destroy the existing two tile that were there, they put a bit larger tile in. And I had a farmer put a request in to fix the old tile, and without going through the drainage district records, I would have never caught that that was an abandoned tile. They left it so it could be used as a private tile. And the new tile was right between the two existing old tiles. And, you know, this this could have been a never ending process. I, so it's pretty hard to find some of these things. Twice, I found tile that were, you had to go through the drainage district records to when the new thing was put in, and our maps showed all three of those tiles as drainage district tile. So, you know, this is just an example of how things can be.
And it's not. Yeah, and point of this is to not say, oh, this is gonna be perfect, that we don't have to do any research on it. I mean, that's that's, you know what I'm saying, the point of it is just trying to figure out the drainage repair request process right now.
And I think I told Carter before he took off and said, hey, this exists, and I can't remember the drainage district, it's uh northeast to Laverne or northwest, but the landowner kept putting requests in, I kept telling him, it's, it's not a drainage district tile, only longer, which is. So I finally went to the drainage district records and copied it and showed what the engineer's report said at that time, but it still showed up on our maps. So.
And there's some things, I mean, you may not know until you get out into the field and dig it up to see what size it actually is. I mean, you might have a twelve inch county main, that you've got a six inch private tile coming into the side of it, and maybe it washed out on the six inch, maybe it washed out on the county tile, you might not know until you get it dug up. So, I mean, a landowner could come in and fill out a request and say, I think it's county tile, and then the contractor might get out there and say, no, it's actually right on the edge of it and it's private tile or something, so, I mean, y- you don't always know that until you get there, and I think that's where photos and exact GPS coordinates and all that can paint a very clear picture, which is why I've focused on that so much over the last several years, is that's as clear of a picture and as transparent as I could possibly be with the tools at hand right now.
Well, and I'm scared of that, and like I said, that's kinda after the fact, that's after you're in it, that's after you're doing it. I I think what we're talking about now is the before part, that we're still talking about, number one. And, you know, we just need to come to terms with that first, like, i- is is a phone call to the auditor's office okay, and then the auditor's office can say, okay, well, we need to, after we're, this is on the map, um to the best of your ability, um here you go, and have them send it to you. I'm okay with that.
If, I guess, in the situation I just said, even if they come in and drive to Elbona and think that it's repair on the county main, I mean, the paperwork on the front end might be right, but your end result is, it might not be a county repair.
Which is caught at the end.
Yep, and that's, and that's fine, but if it's a phone call to the auditor's office or a phone call to the supervisor, what's the difference?
We're talking about the beginning process.
Yeah.
We we cannot put every single situation in this policy. If the end process is to mark it on the GPS or what, the coordinates, whatever, that's fine, that's after. We're talking about the before, and be accurate as we can, as accurate as possible with the drainage repair request that starts the entire process. That's the topic. And I have said, I am okay with a phone call, as long as the auditor's office is okay with that, so that they can still determine and staple that to the request, so we, so we have it. I'm okay with signing it. If I have that information, I will come in and I will sign it, and I will sign it per landowner, per phone call, or whatever. I'll put that directly on that request form.
And that's fine, um as long as you as supervisors understand, if somebody comes in and says, well, I don't remember doing that, and it's your signature on it, I'm gonna tell them to call you.
That's right. And if I sign that, I'm gonna put a lot of notes on that repair request, so. Cause I think I already have, and the ones that I have signed, so.
Don, I'm not asking you to give an opinion here, but did you, I mean, did you ever sign your own repair requests?
I did. Going back to what you discussed earlier, we were trustees. I never signed a request that I never looked at and verified that it was a drainage district tile. And going back to what you said earlier, uh not knowing what it is, telling you dig it up, I carried a tile probe in my pickup every year I was a supervisor. You can discern size of a tile by probing across it, but, you know, granted, you might be all inch, but you're not gonna be all six inches or twelve inches.
Depending on the depth and the scope and stuff, yeah.
In my area, ninety-nine percent of tile for, in your area, it rolls so much, you could probably have tile fifteen feet deep.
You have spots where it could be as shallow as a foot, and spots where it could be ten plus, I mean, you, yeah, it it varies a lot.
In fact, the tile probe still lays in the back of my pickup. It makes a handy thing to pull, bend out now.
So I guess with all that being said, what do you guys want for language on that then? Because it seems like we're talking about a lot of different options and scenarios, but.
I don't, I don't wanna know, I don't, I don't know if I started this problem or not, uh I had several calls saying it's 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 too much of a burden to just spend an hour, come down, and then find out that the right person's not there, or the courthouse is closed that day, and I know that doesn't happen very often, don't get me wrong. I don't know the part about the the right person wasn't there to do it, but I think in number one, I I I'm willing to listen again, but I wanna make sure we're clear on what we're talking about. We're talking about, number one, I think they either show up here in person, or they call the auditor. I I I I can't see anything wrong with it going to the auditor first, and then the auditor can turn around and and call the supervisor right away, or the, or the landowner or the tenant. I, there's, there's been complaints about not answering the phone and this and that, getting delayed. I I still think, in number one, they either show up, or they call, and you, and I wanna put it back to the auditor's office, a burden of that. There, in this day and age, there's gotta be a system that can be adopted to get them to e- email exchange or whatever, pictures, texts, there's gotta be a way to 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 be able to do it. And and there's gonna be people who'll complain, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with email and texts. Well, and and I I I'd be on the low end of that curve. And, and I, I, I'd be on the low end of that curve, I, I'm closer to those people than I am. Where what Kyle Kyle is comfortable with, uh. And or Josh and or Carter, and I don't know where you are, Amber. But, uh, I still like number one, I like them either show up or call, get the bullet ball rolling. And, and again, not to shove it off on you, but you can develop a system of what. That, when it, when they don't even call in and, and get it started, I don't, I don't, I don't see the justification.
Well, I think the call should be the first step, because if they call and then find out, oh, you know, this is a private tile, then they don't have to waste their time driving down here. So I think the phone call should be the first method. Them driving.
I, I disagree with that, I, I think it helps them to see the map too, if they don't have one in front of them, I don't think it should be stipulated that that's the first step.
The preferred method would be in person.
Which is almost people do it.
Yes.
It is, it is actually. The, and that is the preferred method, it always has been, it just makes things easier, it's less complicated in the end, honestly.
If we can't agree on, on that premise, and that is possible, we can't agree on that premise, but if we can agree with that premise. Let's agree on that, uh let's move on to number two.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any issue with phone calls being an option, I just think there's, there's gonna be times and situations where. If, if phone call's not an option, I'm gonna be hearing about it from people that are.
I, I understand, but, but you, but you also need to tell them.
I can, I can tell them to call the auditor.
That's honestly what I've told everybody anyway, because I didn't know it had changed, because it used to be, they came in in person. I mean, so when people called me, I did say that, and then when they sent me. Well, I cannot get there, can you please, and I said, yes, I will, but I am gonna note that our conversation on the request form, you know, so. And once I told to come in, they have no problem with it.
That's, that's fine.
No.
I'd, I'd go along with that.
So what do we want that language to look like then? The landowners, the preferred method is to come and fill it out and sign it, or they may also call into the auditor's office or.
Well, could we change it so it says, and sign the drainage repair request in person or by phone at the Cassis County Auditor's Office?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they won't, they wouldn't sign it by phone, but I mean, just how that's worded, but.
By phone, they're gonna be required to send us where it is.
And then we can add another sentence that said, map of location will be required by the auditor's office. So I still leave the landowner slash tenant the same?
Yeah.
It's gotta be something we, well.
Because it says when a landowner has a request, it's not saying other people can't have a request, it's saying when a landowner has a request. So.
Probably should do landowner slash tenant for that, since it's landowner slash tenant after.
I'll have them both, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, number two.
That's, that's fine.
Well, I think now, like I had the question last week on number two, because I hadn't been going back and checking to see whether things were over ten thousand dollars, so. Now Tammy and.
You kind of have to just judge that, yeah.
They are putting it in there in the spreadsheet when that invoice comes through, what that cost is, so then I think when we look at it. We can always bring it to the attention and say, I, I, my repair request number twenty-five was, ended up being eleven thousand dollars. I mean, there's not a lot we can do about it after the fact, but at least if we're aware, which is a communication.
For those that I've had that have been more than that amount, typically I've had a bid before. Even that they go out and do that, or I know about what it costs, more, if it's gonna be more than ten thousand, I've. I typically already known how much that was gonna cost and we did discuss it in the boardroom.
Okay, well, and, and I haven't been through it now since.
I don't know, was that new?
But I haven't requested.
Number two, that's, that's always been on there, hasn't it? So, that, that's fine.
I didn't understand it, you know, like, I didn't know it was there, I should say.
Sure. Three and four are pretty.
Those are the same.
They're pretty much by code.
Fifty thousand is the, fifty thousand is the threshold for a public hearing in the code, but. Um bids are not required upwards of a hundred and some thousand right now, so. Our policy is a lower threshold than that, but it correlates with the public hearing, which I think is. Is appropriate, because that's, if you're gonna have a public hearing, you're gonna want substance of something that you're gonna talk about, so. Scope of repair or whatever is obviously gonna be that conversation, you're gonna want something there.
Number eight changed a little.
Are we good with five, I mean?
Yeah, five is scale tickets.
Scale tickets.
For rock.
Some, somebody told me, no, I don't know, whatever, and we, not saying we have to dive into it or putting language in there, but. That, um scale tickets have been received before and have, items have been whited out. I mean, why would that be, why would there ever be anything whited out on scale tickets when they're turned into the auditor's office?
The only thing I could think of is if they're picking up rock for two different projects and they're only. Needing to submit one portion of that for a repair request, so they white out the portion that's not part of that. That'd be the only thing I could think of.
Well, just thought I'd bring it up.
Should add language in there, that says unaltered scale tickets. But, then again.
I think if we see that, we address it at the time, I suppose, and try and ask for. Better records, I don't know, I mean. I wouldn't know until you saw one and. Ask what the situation was.
Okay.
And then six is improvement, which is a code, it just kind of talks about it. Yep, seven is notification, which we talked about, um. Increasing notification above the requirements in the code of Iowa for sending a postcard for bid lettings. So any future bid lettings we have, we would send a postcard, which I think is good, important information. Information as far as litigation in number eight, talked about that multiple times here. Thing on that one?
Information on letter, no, I think we said that. Drainage assessments.
Yep, did we get an answer on that, if Nick's able to put those in with drainage assessments, or did you guys talk to him?
No, because it, that would pretty much be something we would. Help with, so.
Yeah, so it can be done.
So that'd be something basically the auditor's office would provide to Nick and Nick would, um include those in those assessments, is that kind of the process?
Yeah.
Okay, they didn't talk to him about that, so.
And I said, I'm sure that really wouldn't, I can't speak for Nick, but I'm sure it wouldn't be a problem when we did taxes. They would combine the drainage assessment with the tax statement when they could, so.
Yeah.
You know, they were kind of doing a little bit of that already, even though they aren't now, but to me, that would be minor.
Yeah, and eliminate need for extra postage, so that would be.
Yep.
Good.
Well, it would save money.
Yeah.
Yep.
You like that?
I think number nine is something that we've had in here, but it hasn't been strictly enforced. Under any capacity, but, um, the wide fittings. So that there's not an obstruction to water flow or televising ability, I think that's something. We probably need to start highlighting more to contractors and engineering firms, um. So that we have better connections to our facilities or even connections from laterals, because. I think that is kind of outlined in the code even, but I don't have a section for that. But I mean, even a contractor putting in pattern tile in a whole field, if they just punch a hole and. Tap into the side of it, it.
Then you got debris in the tile too.
Yeah, if you knock out a six inch hole and. You got a six inch chunk of clay or concrete sitting in the bottom of the pipe. Then you go to televise it how many years later and you're trying to drive over chunks of clay or concrete and it's. It's an obstruction. So. Now granted. If you were tying into the main on multiple times, it could be inconvenient, but. A lot of times people will do like a private sub main off of. The actual county facility, so then they're tying into private tile multiple times. County facility once or a couple times, so. I don't know, I just think. Having a little bit of a focus on that to try to keep our infrastructure in better shape for the future is. Gonna be more and, and more and more important as we go. Especially for new systems.
Yep, as I asked you, we just did one where it wasn't. Just did a big one where it wasn't.
Couple of big ones.
Well, we're good to, good with the rest of it then?
And then have we talked GPS coordinates and private trustees?
Yep.
Maybe prior April thirtieth of the year, he wanted assessed. It's always gonna be prior to April thirtieth.
You can do prior April thirtieth of that calendar year, maybe.
Yeah, whatever, I don't care, it's, it's, it'll, it'll understand.
Should.
Well, I should know that if it comes in after April thirtieth, it ain't gonna get assessed until the following year.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Alright, well, do we need a motion, or, oh, Don, you had something?
I'm a little hard to hear, the thing is, uh, did you cover having half fabricated Ys for. Connecting to mains? I mean, I think that's very important.
Yeah, we just.
We, we just talked about that, yep.
Like I said, I'm a little bit hard to hear.
Yeah.
No, we, we've got, we got that covered.
Okay, thank you.
Um, on number eleven. It says that the assessment request must be approved by a resolution, so I did put a copy of a resolution that I got from another county that I kind of changed to that our county.
Thanks for coming in, Don, have a good one.
So just making sure that you're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we need a roll call vote and the, like, the list of who they vote, or how each. Member votes on the resolution form, I thought of that, I mean, it might be.
The other county didn't have it, I, I mean, they don't, and they don't have to use this resolution, and I don't think we're saying they have to use this one, we're just. Supplying them with one, so they don't have to come up with their own.
Yeah.
But I think it's important to have that.
Yeah.
Handwriting.
Yeah, because last week I'd, I'd read the email wrong and said that we need to approve the resolution, it's not us, it's them. That should be passing it by resolution, so.
And then submitting it to your office.
Correct.
And we go back to.
I was, I was just thinking about the vote, because then it would all be recorded on the same document, it would be clearer, maybe. Um, obviously, if it, if it was motion second and it passed, then you should have the votes for that, but. Um, and the signature and stuff should attest to that, but. It might be decent to just add a line in there for. Roll call vote, the member's name and then their vote.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're assuming they're gonna use your.
Yeah, that's just if they use ours.
Yeah.
You're thinking like down at the bottom, kind of like how on our claims, we have, you know. Supervisor and then the I or name, and then they would just sign I or name, whatever they voted.
Honestly, kind of like the agenda prep of the names of each member, and then you could write a yet Y or N or.
Well, the problem is, is then you gotta have it made for that specific drain, because you need to put those names on it, because.
If you give them a Word document template, you could have name of trustee.
We're not emailing it, we're mailing it to everybody, so.
So that's why I was thinking you could just have the line for I or name, and then they would just sign it under each line, so then that way the vote is recorded there.
Like.
I think we're getting too specific.
I mean, as long, if, if they, if there's, if it's signed by two people, it passed, I don't think they're gonna sign it.
And most of them only have three, right, they only have three.
Yeah.
So if two people are signing it, we know it's passed.
Okay. We just want a motion to approve, as discussed here.
What, what, read number, the other thing to change is number one, you wanna read it number one?
Sure, number one says, when a landowner slash tenant has a repair request, the landowner slash tenant shall fill out and sign the drainage. Repair request in person or by phone at the Cassis County Auditor's Office. A map of the location of the request will be required by the auditor's office.
You can decide how to get there.
Yeah.
We can, they, they don't have to. There's no requirement, they can do it however it seems.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
We had a motion by Haas. Second by Garmin. Discussion.
Is it okay if I put to approve the drainage policy as corrected?
As discussed.
As discussed, okay.
Are you gonna put a copy of the policy in the minutes?
Do you want me to?
I think that, where, I said.
Okay, I can.
It should be in the minutes and sent out to all the contractors and engineers.
We'll, we'll do that.
Okay, maybe post a Facebook page too, that there was an update for people to do.
Well, I think.
I'm not gonna start that, because then they're gonna want every single thing.
And so, do we need?
Gotta be consistent.
And are you gonna send a little letter with that?
Okay, yes.
To the contractors?
Sounds good. Okay, uh, yeah, no further discussion, then.
Roll call vote or not on that?
We can do a roll call vote, that's fine, okay, roll call vote.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Now?
Yes. Motion carries. Alrighty. Uh, do we wanna call Doug, Doug, sorry?
Okay, you're prepared.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I meant.
Yeah, we skipped around too.
Yeah. Okay, um, motion to, for supervisors to handle their requests and.
Do you wanna read that?
And Amber has one that she can read.
I have one, yeah.
Yep.
Ready?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, this is in drainage district number one fourteen, the request number is seventy. Um, it is section thirty-five of Plum Creek Township, it's in the northeast quarter, it's plugged by the grass CRP. Uh, it's not in the ditch. So, um, it's Nick Mergen, I will look into that.
Nope, he called me and I said, I'm gonna wait.
Okay, very good, I will, I will talk with him.
Okay.
For all our conversation about the maps, is that good enough?
Well, was, well.
He drew it.
And, and he was in the office, we verified it's, it's county, so. I mean. Do we want to, I mean, if we want Jennifer to do something more, we just need to tell her, I'm sure she's more than happy to do that.
I was just, I was just curious, I, there's not a ton on there, but I don't, I don't personally have concerns about it, but I wasn't. Raising concerns about the maps or.
Well, I was raising a concern about nothing on there. It's kind of showing the general location and they verified it's county and. And it must not be reclassified, so because it says D D one fourteen.
Amber Garmin.
Oh, sure.
You can tell he's been on vacation.
Forget that.
Welcome back from vacation.
Been gone too long. I went to, my mind went to Algona.
Why? Yeah. I'll make the motion for supervisors to handle the requests.
Okay. Motion by Waxter, is that Amber?
No, it's the second.
Oh. Okay, Kyle. By Stacker. Discussion. Hearing now, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now why don't you call, just call Doug and tell him both, we're gonna take a quick break here and. Quick. Then get set up.
Ten thirty-five.
Okay.
Ten thirty-five, we'll be back. Hey Doug, it's Josh, it's the reporter, we're gonna take a ten minute break and then we'll be up to you. Alright, yep.
We never talked again about putting anything in there.
Daily.
Yeah.
So when I go to the drainage. Is that spreadsheet under something different? For the, the others.
It's called drainage. Yeah, sure.
Oh, I'm looking at the one that says it was updated on nine eight. But it's still Excel, like, should I be able to get into an Excel?
Yeah, yeah, but you will be able to add it.
Okay, okay, sounds good, so. Can you see the column? It's always working up at the top because of the suit, and the ones on the top will be. And there's one that I need to go in there and I just got an invoice yesterday, so. And like, and I'm all the way over, I don't see the cost. And they're completed. Oh wait, this is two thousand twenty-three, and that's probably what, it, yeah, it opened up in two thousand twenty-three, okay. Oh, there we go, good, good.
Okay.
So then these that were like were completed five one, we're we're just gonna go back and try and figure it out.
If I was out?
If I can't find them.
Yeah.
If you can, I will, I will do my best.
Yeah, that's fine, that's good, good, no, I.
God, I kinda, I was attacking like, I know, I added that.
I was just saying, well, cause I am like putting it around, yeah. But I'm writing on there, boy. Yeah, and I think that one was, that one was mine and it was under ten thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay, good deal, thanks.
You're welcome.
What else is going on with you, Josh, anything?
Hmm. A lot, but not anything really noteworthy.
Really busy. Really do that. I'm talking about the rain normally and. This time of year, when it's time to clean out the bottom of an auger to. Doesn't have any corn, if you're gonna auger beans. Normally it's dry and you just, I can just vacuum that stuff out of there, well, I can assure you. It's not dry right now, but.
Yeah, yeah.
It's halfway on its way to manure, but. Oh, it supposedly, uh. Need my memory for names.
Andy Gales.
I'm sorry.
Andy? An- Andy Gales, no.
Joe.
Joe, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah.
He's gonna have field bees or probably.
I got chili.
Oh, really?
It's chili.
I don't have any of that. Two to three.
I haven't started up the boilers yet. Matt's supposed to have to do that yet.
Yeah, it's true.
No, Gail is.
Mario.
Just turn it down.
It's the air handlers is what it is.
Yeah, it's all, it's just circulation.
Well, it always used to be.
And we are having an issue with.
With that corn right north of.
Yeah.
The ground.
There.
Yeah.
Was it always?
We're gonna have to get a part for it to do some stuff with it.
A lot of times I was first field planted too, it's.
Well, we're all back and and good morning Doug.
Good morning.
And we'll go ahead with the official report of county highway engineer.
Yeah, I'd just like to review this with the board. This is a report due to the Department of Transportation, the. Middle of September, just to kinda go through. Money that came in for fiscal year twenty-five and expenditures then for twenty twenty-five, so. Uh, that first sheet is just a sheet, a table of contents. Uh, if you look at sheet two, financial sheet for the secondary road fund. Auditors' balance on July one was five million two hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and forty cents. We had total receipts, uh, in our secondary road fund of eleven million one hundred eighty-eight thousand three hundred forty-five dollars and eighteen cents. So we had sixteen million four hundred sixty thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Of total funds to be accounted for. Our expenditures, and I'll just, uh, read these out, but they are. Broken up a little bit more in some of the following sheets. Uh, total administration and engineering was eight hundred thousand eighty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. Total construction was one million three hundred eighteen thousand one hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Total roadway maintenance, uh, which is bridges, maintenance on bridges and culvers, roads, whether it's gravel. Or paved, snow and ice control, the materials, uh, for our salt and our sand, traffic controls, the signs, uh, the labor. For that kind of thing and road clearing, uh, any kind of spray in the road right away or brush removal. That, uh, ended up being four million five hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and ten cents. For general roadway expenditures, we had new equipment of one million five hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and six cents. Equipment operations, uh, which includes. Fuels, oils, chains, tire chains, tires, uh, all of that, uh, equipment operations. Including utilities for shops and that type of stuff. One million six hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Uh, tools, thirty-one thousand three hundred fifty dollars and sixty-eight cents, and then real estate and buildings. Uh, hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Of that, hundred sixty-four thousand, I think about a hundred fifty thousand was drainage, uh, district, uh. Uh, repairs and improvements related for drainage. So our total expenditures were ten million one hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. We did have some obligated expenses at the end of June and that amounted to be. Uh, three million eight hundred ten thousand thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cents, giving us an unobligated balance of. Two million four hundred seventy-three thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and seventeen cents. Our actual ending balance was, uh, auditors' ending balance was six million two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and nine cents. Um, leaving us the total funds accounted for of the sixteen million four six, four hundred sixty thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, which is at the top of that sheet, they equal. Uh, receipts on sheet three, uh, from rural basic taxes, property taxes, we received two million sixty-five thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and seven cents. Uh, general basic, uh, we received two million. Uh, excuse me, two hundred ninety thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Uh, local option sales tax, we received one million dollars. Regular road use tax fund, money's received to the secondary road department amounted to six million eight hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars and seven cents. Time twenty-one funds, seven hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred seven dollars and sixty cents and city farm to market extension funds. Uh, amounted to be sixty-three thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Along with some tax refunds, thirteen thousand three hundred forty-one dollars eighty-three cents. Uh, some miscellaneous receipts which are, uh, itemized down below that table, the total. Uh, receipts that the road department received was eleven million one hundred eighty-eight thousand three hundred forty-five dollars and eighteen cents. And again, the total of funds accounted for equally as earlier. Uh, sheet four is administration and engineering, uh, if you wanna see a breakdown of that total, six hundred five thousand dollar total. Construction costs, again on sheet five, uh, the breakdown on bridges, we had six hundred thirty-five thousand dollars on bridges, six hundred thirty. Two thousand on paving. Uh, resurfacing, I should say, uh, hot mixed asphalt. Uh, roadway maintenance, you can see some of the breakdowns of cost on sheet six. Sheet seven in roadway maintenance, more of the snow, traffic control, road clearing. And then the general roadway expenditures, uh, sheet eight. Uh, sheet nine, indebtedness, we do not have any debt in the secondary road department, so it is zero. Uh, locally funded projects, sheet ten dash one, uh, this is money that was spent on, uh, construction, local construction. And just quickly go through, I'll go through that, uh, local project of. East of Legyard. That project in twenty twenty-five, if you look down in the lower right-hand corner, for twenty twenty-five, we spent four hundred sixty thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. The total project, uh, in twenty twenty-four, we'd spent money on that, the total project was seven hundred thirty-seven thousand fifty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. On sheet ten two, uh, local project, this was on P forty from A twenty-one north to A sixteen. That project, we spent one hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred thirteen dollars and eighty cents, uh, in fiscal year twenty-five, the total project. Was five hundred seven thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, the next project on ten dash three is a bridge, uh, down by George Gunter's, fifty-seven thirty-four eighty. In twenty twenty-five, we spent thirteen thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents. The total project cost for that bridge was four hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Project, uh, on ten four, project sixty-seven eighteen oh six, that's a project that's being constructed right now north of Sexton. In twenty twenty-five, we spent one hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred forty dollars and one cent and it's approximately twenty percent complete now. Or through the fiscal year. And then on ten dash five, there was a project, this would be to the east and south of Dana Arndorfer's, but bridge fifty seven, twenty six oh four, it's completed now. In twenty twenty five, we spent five hundred thousand, four hundred sixty five dollars and fifty five cents. The total project cost on that structure was five hundred twenty one thousand, four hun, eight hundred forty one thousand and thirty four dollars. On sheet eleven through eleven four, that's a county equipment and inventory of county equipment, pickups, dump trucks, semi tractors, road graders, trailers, dump, pop, pop trailers, belly dump trailers, all of our equipment, so. Just for your review, if you'd like. And then sheet twelve is expenditures for secondary roads that was not accounted for through the secondary road fund. The only thing that we really have to use for expenditures for secondary roads that are not accounted for would be the property insurance and the equipment insurance. And we estimated that this year at, last year at two hundred fifteen thousand dollars. And then I broke it down for administration and engineering, fifteen thousand. For equipment operations, a hundred fifty thousand, and real estate, fifty thousand. So just that is not accounted for through the secondary road fund. And if you go to section thirteen, that dollar amount then is used in looking at our local effort. Local effort, we, all counties in the state of Iowa by the code are required to spend seventy five percent of their maximum, maximum property tax amount. So if you look at section one, and you look at the tab, tabulation of actual receipts, you can see that through rural basic, we had two million, sixty five thousand, one hundred thirty nine dollars and seven cents. General basic, we received two hundred ninety thousand, two hundred seventy six dollars and sixty five cents, giving us a total property tax of two million, thirty five thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and seventy two cents. From local option sales tax, we had one million dollars. And then the other funds provided for secondary road purchases, which was the previous amount, two hundred fifteen thousand dollars, gave us total receipts of three hundred fifty thou, three million, five hundred seventy thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and seventy two cents. And then the middle of section two is the calculation of the maximum revenue potential. So all property value multiplied by sixteen and seven eight cents, which is the maximum secondary road property tax levy rate. That gives you the two million, or two hundred thou, two hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred thou, eight hundred dollars and thirty four cents. The rural property value can be levied at three dollars and three eight cents per thousand. That would give four million, ten thousand, five hundred forty five dollars and sixty eight cents, or the total revenue potential in Cassuth County is four million, three hundred one thousand, three hundred forty six dollars and two cents. Our minimum requirement, if you take seventy five percent of that, four point three million dollars, our minimum requirement is three million, two hundred twenty six thousand, nine dollars and fifty one cents. We can show that we spent three million, five hundred seventy thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and seventy two cents. So we comply with that by our local effort percentage of eighty three point zero one percent. Sheet fourteen. And yeah, sheet fourteen is statement of final cost for some projects. We went over the local projects, which is the resurfacing east of Legyard, the resurfacing north of A twenty one. The bridge down by George Gunter's, the bridge by Dana Arndorfer's. We also had federally funded bridge project, which was south of Titanca over Lyndon Creek, and that ended up being a final cost of seven hundred forty thousand, nine hundred twenty three dollars and eighty five cents. And then on the next page, there was another BR project, which would have been on the Bold Hobarton Road, and that had a final cost of six hundred twenty nine thousand, sixty four dollars and fifty cents. And then their last sheet on this packet of information is just some manual report notes. So that's just the official report in the county highway engineer for the Iowa Department of Transportation.
Okay, thank you.
Give the board a word.
When, when you can, if you would just acknowledge that you received it, please. You can have Tammy fill that out, but if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, or anybody want to make a motion to acknowledge the official report?
Reunite approval or acknowledge.
Well, there's a motion here.
Just accept.
A motion to accept? Okay, a motion to accept the county official report? All right, motion by Garmin. Second by Stucker. Any discussion?
Might need to update the names on here.
No, I was just thinking about that, too.
Sorry, Josh, Mike.
Well, Josh is fine.
Yeah. Well, no. I'm glad you brought that up, but.
It's just on the motion, it doesn't.
Yeah.
I guess that you're supposed to put it on.
No, it shows.
Correct.
Ah, okay.
Roger and Jack, you want to vote today?
There's no further discussion then? All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
And we've got a transfer station equipment purchase?
Well, I still have a couple of things here yet.
Oh, okay.
Annual report that I would like to just discuss here. This, what I do is just kind of, if, if you were to look at all of the expenditures in the solution software, I should have brought it up. There are, in the Iowa DOT annual report, there are reimbursements and there are receipts. And if you just look at all the money coming in and the money going out, that's kind of what this Cassuth County Secondary Road Financial Report is. So the, the figures are a little bit different, but I, in my mind, it's a little bit more accurate. I, I, I look at dollars in and dollars out. So if you look at the first sheet, page two of six, you can see again the administration and engineering costs, eight hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars and ninety eight cents. That's seven point seven percent of all the expenditures that were made. Construction, we had one million, three hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and thirty seven cents, which is twelve point seven percent of the expenditures. Roadway maintenance, total expenditures of four million, seven hundred eight thousand, seven hundred sixty nine dollars and eighty four cents, or forty five point three approximately. And then general roadway, three million, five hundred seventy five thousand, six hundred seventy five dollars and twenty two cents, thirty four point four percent. So the total expenditures were two, ten million, four hundred two thousand, eight hundred seventy six dollars and forty one cents. Our ending balance on June thirty was six million, two hundred eighty three thousand, nine hundred, five hundred ninety five dollars and nine cents. The total expenditures plus the ending balance was equal to sixteen million, six hundred eighty six thousand, four hundred seventy one dollars and fifty cents. The obligated expenditures, which I have detailed on sheet three of six of this. Actually, I think it's sheet four of six. I need to update that, sorry. Sheet four of six was.
Can I back you up real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Back to page two, I just noticed a number that was different. The only reason I noticed that was just because it stood out to me a little bit, the snow and ice control, seven twelve. And the report you handed us is a different number. The one that you just handed us has a hundred and seventy two thousand, but the other report has a hundred and sixty nine thousand.
Right, because we do have some reimbursements for snow removal on that particular. And we have two twenty eighty agreements with the city of Lone Rock and the city of Legyard.
Okay.
So that's where, that's where you get a reimbursement, and you get a different dollar amount expended in the DOT, where I look at the reimbursement as more of a receipt.
Okay.
There are a few instances of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I just noticed that and just wanted to.
So we have the obligated expenses of three million, eight hundred ten thousand, thirty three dollars and ninety two cents, leaving us an unobligated balance on June thirty, twenty twenty five of two million, four hundred seventy three thousand, five hundred sixty one dollars and seventeen cents. On sheet three, that's our revenue, all of our receipts, all the dollars that came into the secondary road fund. We started off the year, July one of twenty twenty four, with a balance of five million, two hundred seventy one thousand, eight hundred forty seven dollars and forty cents. We had property tax transfers, again, general basic and rural basic of two million, three hundred fifty five thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and seventy two cents. That's twenty point six percent of all the revenue. Local option sales tax is one million dollars, and that's eight point seven, eight point eight percent of, of the revenue. Road use tax, seven million, six hundred eighty three thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars and sixteen cents. That's sixty seven percent of the revenue coming into the secondary road department. And then miscellaneous receipts of three hundred seventy five thousand, nine, five hundred ninety two dollars and twenty two cents, and that's three point three percent of the revenue coming in. So our total receipts were eleven million, four hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred twenty four dollars and ten cents. And the total receipts plus the beginning balance was sixteen million, six hundred eighty six thousand, four hundred seventy one dollars and fifty cents, so we balanced that away. Just a list of some of the outstanding bills, construction project obligations, and maintenance project obligations. We did have a payroll, three hundred forty thousand, four hundred seventy five dollars. That was due in July of twenty twenty five, plus some claims of forty nine thousand, two hundred fifty six dollars and four cents that were due July one. Construction projects, we still have five hundred twelve thousand, four hundred ninety eight dollars and fifty nine cents. That was due, that was due on the bridge project north of Sexton. Gravel crushing, three hundred twenty nine thousand, traffic marking, hundred ninety eight thousand. Micro surfacing was three hundred fifty four thousand, roadside spraying, fifty two thousand, and steel coat work, two hundred forty four thousand dollars. And then equipment, we have a loader for three hundred twenty four, three hundred twenty five thousand dollars, and four motor graders, one million, four hundred five thousand for those, so our total obligated expenses broken down there. But the total is three hundred, three million, eight hundred ten thousand, thirty three dollars and ninety two cents. The farm to market fund, which is all administered through the Iowa Department of Transportation. We started the year, July one of twenty twenty four, with a, uh, three million, two hundred, six hundred twenty three thousand, seven hundred twenty seven dollars and one cent negative. In the hole, we are able to borrow four and a half years' worth of our state road use tax that is put into that. So we do take advantage of that. There is no interest on that by paying ahead. Some people save money, some people spend the money, all the counties together make up the fund. We had receipts of two million, seven hundred twenty one thousand, five hundred thirty five dollars and thirty four cents, and those are in that table below. You can see our state road use tax in the table, along with some federal surface transportation, and that would be a project STP job, which would have been the Irvington Road. We did expend some money in the fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty five on that project. And then we had some federal bridge money in the first, second, third quarter. But our, our receipts were two million, seven hundred twenty one thousand, five hundred thirty four dollars and thirty four cents. Disbursements, what was paid was amounted to nine hundred seventy seven thousand, eight hundred eighty seven dollars and eighteen cents. So our ending balance on June thirty of twenty twenty five, the cash balance was negative one million, eight hundred eighty thousand, seventy eight dollars and eighty five cents. We still have, at, on, on that date, June thirty, twenty twenty five, we still had five million, five hundred nine thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars and thirty six cents of projects under construction. So our unobligated balance on that day was seven million, negative seven million, three hundred eighty nine thousand, eight hundred fifty nine dollars and twenty one cents. And then the last sheet in this package, sheet six of six, is just some compliance checks that I use. We, the road department has some rules that we have to follow as far as expenditures. I call them, there's the county expenditure rules, which all county funds are required, my understanding, but then there's some other expenditures that, from the Iowa Code, the secondary road fund needs to follow. But the engineering administration, we budgeted nine hundred five thousand, nine hundred dollars. We expended eight hundred thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars and ninety eight cents. We complied there by not going over the budget. Now, the Iowa Code does allow in, on those seven hundred accounts, seven zero, the administration, the roadway, and the general roadway, we can spend up to one hundred ten percent of any of those lines there. The total, the roadway maintenance, we budgeted five million, three hundred twenty six thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. We spent four million, seven hundred eight thousand, seven hundred sixty nine dollars and eighty four cents, we complied. The general roadway, we spent, where we budgeted three million, eight hundred twenty six thousand, seven hundred dollars. And I just realized, there's two, there's the Cassuth County annual report amount, and there's the Iowa DOT report, and it's kind of getting back to what Josh had asked earlier, whether the receipts are, are considered to be a reimbursement or whether it's a receipt, that's the difference between the Cassuth County annual report and the Iowa DOT report. General roadway, we budgeted three million, eight hundred twenty six thousand, seven hundred dollars, and we spent less than that, so we complied. Total dollars, this would be the ten million, fifty nine thousand, four hundred fifty dollars total budget. With the Cassuth County, we spent nine hundred, nine million, eight four thousand, seven hundred sixty one dollars and four cents, so we complied with that. Construction was two million dollars, we spent one million, three hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and thirty seven cents. We complied with that. And then if you look at both the total of the seven hundreds and the construction budget, total budget, two, twelve million, fifty nine thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. And then if you look at both the total of the seven hundreds and the construction budget, total budget, two, twelve million fifty-nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Was budgeted ten million four hundred two thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars, forty-one cents was spent. So we complied with both of those as well. And then the local effort, we kind of went through that earlier, but just, we were at eighty-three point zero two percent. And we complied with the seventy-five percent minimum requirement. So that's that. I also have some data from all these, I guess, are there any questions on the county portion? I have some data that I've compiled from, for all counties in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And I'd like to share with you. And then I kind of have some of the conclusions that can be drawn from this data in a text format here. So if you look at this packet of data, all ninety-nine counties are listed here. And I have the table kind of divided into geography, road and bridge information, staffing information, and that's kind of the first section. Page one and two list all the counties. Cassuth County is highlighted in yellow. And if it's a maximum value, it's highlighted in green. If it's a minimum value, it's highlighted in red. So the first column there is square, is area, it's square miles. The last page of these columns is on page three. But you can see Cassuth County with nine hundred seventy-three miles. It is the largest county area-wise. If you look at the bottom table on sheet three, you can see Cassuth County's value. You can see the maximum and the minimum out of that column, the average, the median, the rank, Cassuth County's rank, the percentage of the maximum, the percentage of the minimum, that percentage of the average, and the percentage of the median. So in area, Cassuth County ranks number one. For total miles of road, Cassuth County is number one. Dirt miles, we have twenty-nine mi- miles of dirt roads. The maximum is one hundred ninety-nine miles. The minimum is zero. The average is forty-three, and the median is twenty-nine. Cassuth County has fourteen percent of the max, our value is fourteen percent of the max. We can't have a percentage of the median when it's, or excuse me, the minimum, when it's divided by zero. The average, we can give percentage of the average and a percentage of the median. So you can just go across there and look at our total miles of road, total of bridges, bridges in good condition, bridges in for, fair condition, and bridges in poor condition. Then we also have our staffing information. We have a staff of forty-one people, six office employees, thirty-one road employees, and four mechanic employees when we're full staff. But you can just see how, where Cassuth County ranks with that. The second columns are the, from the annual reports of twenty twenty-four. The Department of Transportation has a summary of annual reports. So everyone's administrative costs, engineering costs, administration and engineering costs, roadway maintenance costs, general roadway costs, engineering administration, road and general roadway costs, construction costs, and total can be gathered from that annual report of information. And again, if you go to sheet six, you can see in the bottom table what Cassuth County expended for administration, engineering, administration and engineering, and those different things there. And then if you look at the next column, again, it's annual report information. This is revenue and specifically local revenue. But if you go to sheet nine of twelve, you can see where Cassuth County's revenue for the levy rates, the rule basic dollars, the levy rates for general, general basic dollars, the total property taxes, the local option service and sales tax, and the total local dollars. And you can see how Cassuth County, where Cassuth County stands with other counties around the state. And then the last one is some calculated information from the three previous groupings that I have calculated. And if you go to sheet twelve and twelve, you can see where Cassuth County's, the secondary road property tax per square mile, the property tax per total miles, secondary road local dollars per square mile, secondary roads local dollars per total miles, the administration, engineering, road in general, dollars per square mile. Again, the administration expenditures, engineering road general, per miles of road, expenditures per total bridges, the administration cost per square mile, engineering administration, engineering administration costs per bridges. And then the county area per employee and the road miles per employee. You can see where Cassuth County ranks there. And then if you look at the text that I put together using that data, again, you can just see the area of Cassuth County, the first one that I have there. Cassuth County is ninety-seven, nine hundred seventy-three square miles. So it is the largest county in the state of Iowa. The total miles of secondary road is one thousand six hundred forty-seven dol- uh, dollars, miles, largest in the state of Iowa. Total miles of granular surface roads is one thousand one hundred four. That's number two in the state of Iowa. Paved roads, a five hundred thirteen, that is the second highest amount in the state of Iowa. We have two hundred forty-eight bridges. We, there's, that ranks sixteenth in the state of Iowa. Total number of road employees is forty-one. That ranks seventeenth in the state of Iowa. And secondary road administration and engineering costs is eight hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents, which ranks twentieth in the state of Iowa. Secondary road administration, engineering, roadway maintenance, general roadway cost is nine million six hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. That's thirteenth in the state of Iowa. The rural basic levy rate of one per thousand dollars of taxable valuation that's transferred to the secondary road fund is, the levy rate is one dollar forty-eight, one point four eight two four four, which is ninety-sixth. There's ninety-five counties that tax at a higher levy rate than that. The rural basic dollars that are transferred to the secondary road fund was one million nine hundred twelve thousand five hundred nineteen dollars. That ranked at fifty-five. The general basic levy per one thousand is sixteen point eight four four cents per thousand, which is ranked twenty-two. The general basic dollars that are transferred to secondary road fund is two mil- two hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, which is the thirteenth highest amount. The total property debt tax dollars transferred to the secondary road fund was two million one hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-eight cents, which is fiftieth out of the ninety-nine counties. The local option sales and service tax transferred was seven hundred fifty thousand. That was ranked twenty-second. So the total dollars, local dollars transferred to the secondary road fund in Cassuth County was two million nine hundred forty-six thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-eight cents, which ranks thirty-seven out of the ninety-nine counties. Local effort percentage in Cassuth County in twenty twenty-four was seventy-five point one six percent, which is ninety-third. Ninety-two having a higher local effort percentage in the state. Total secondary road fund property tax dollars spent per square mile was two thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents per square mile. That is the eighty-seventh. There's eighty-six other counties spend more than that per square mile. The total secondary road fund property tax dollars spent per total miles of Cassuth County was one thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. That rank is ninety-one. So ninety other counties spend more per mile of road than what Cassuth County does. The total secondary road fund dollar, local tax dollars spent per square mile, this would be the property tax and the local option sales and service tax, was three thousand twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. That's eighty-one, we rank eighty-one. Eighty counties spend more local dollars than what Cassuth County does. The total secondary road fund ta- total tax dollars spent per total miles of road in Cassuth County was one thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. That rank is eighty-three. So there's quite a few counties that spend more per mile locally, local dollars than what Cassuth County does. As far as engineering and administration, roadway maintenance and general roadway expenses, Cassuth County had expenditures of nine million eight hundred eighty-eight thousand six hun- or, excuse me. The Cassuth County was nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents per square mile, which ranks us eighty-three. Eighty-two counties paying, paying more per square mile with all of their seven hundred accounts. The secondary road and engineering, administration, roadway maintenance, general roadway expense per mile of road was five thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents per mile of road, which is ranked eighty-seven. The secondary road administration and engineering expense was nine hundred eight dollars and thirty-six, seven cents per square mile, which is eighty-sixth in the state. The secondary road and engineering expenses per mile of road was five hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty-one cents, which is eighty-ninth in the state of Iowa. And then the secondary road administration engineer expenses in Cassuth County was three thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents per number of bridges, which is fifty-one, ranks fifty-one in the state. And then look at Cassuth County's total number of employees versus the area. Per employee, we have twenty-three point seven three square miles per employee. That is ranked number four. And then the total miles of roadway divided by the number of secondary road employees was forty miles per employee, and that ranks number three. I think when you look at all the counties, the data that Ben provided, Cassuth County, the dollars that we spend seem to be efficient. A lot of counties, the majority of the counties, spend more per mile, spend more per the area. We also, our employees are covering a lot more area, a lot more roads. So given that information, I'd, one, like to say that our secondary road employees, mechanics, the maintenance men, our foreman, they're doing a heck of a good job. And I think our office is doing a good job as well for the, compared to other counties. We continue, we will continue to continue to try to make it efficient, but I think we're doing a pretty good job with that as well. And the board supervisors also should be complimenting because of this cooperation between the engineer's office and the road. And the board supervisors, these costs are definitely part of what the board is doing as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you for presenting all that. Any questions for Doug?
How many trees were harmed in the making of this process?
I don't care, I like the paper cut.
Thank you for harming our books.
I just had to laugh.
I, if I read PDF files better, I would use them. I get to the final version and I have to, I need paper. Maybe the younger generation.
Yeah.
But.
I just had to make it.
I, I like that.
Well, that's fine. One of the ways maybe we can be more, a little bit more efficient.
After number, after number, after number, I'd have something to change space.
Well, if, if nothing else, then on that topic, we can go ahead with the transfer station equipment purchase then?
Yeah, we talked just a little bit last week about our, our staff found a used semi-tractor that will work at our transfer station. It's a two thousand, year two thousand Freightliner semi-tracker. Greg Gilbert Trucking here now going, has it, and they're asking fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for it. It has a Cummins N fourteen engine. It has six hundred seventy-five thousand miles. It's a pretty simple truck. It does have a wet kit on it, air on that. I think it's, it's a good, it would be a good fit for our transfer station, just using it as a machine that will move trailers around in the, at the transfer station, but also be able to, if we need some maintenance done on those, we will be able to use it out on the road as well. What we have right now is a nineteen ninety-nine Sterling. It has Caterpillar thirty-one twenty-six B and almost half a million miles. There was an engine changed in it. The new engine, I think it was right around two hundred fifty thousand, so this new engine has about the amount of what the original engine had in it. It is starting to, we're noticing the power in the machine is not like it was when we started out with it a few years ago. And we're hoping that this Freightliner would give us, give us a few years of good use. I would ask the board to go ahead and approve of that purchase, I guess. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask.
I know that a question was posed that if you, if you able to figure out if there was any major overhauls or any maintenance done on that.
Not that we're aware of. I mean, they got the records on that. If it's was, it's just been maintained, it's not been had a major overhaul or anything like that, Josh.
What year did you say the Sterling was that you're, you're using?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Yes. It was a dump truck.
Yeah.
And we put a fifth wheel on, took the box off, put a fifth wheel on.
I'll make a motion for a, purchase of two thousand Freightliner.
Motion by Hives, second by Stecker. Discussion on the purchase. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Any right of way work? Looks like we got one in the packet.
There is one request. It's from Midland Power. There is a new, new residence, new home being built out east of Algonah. About five or six miles east and Midland Power has electricity on the south side of McGregor B-40. The house is being built on the north side there. Asking to four hundred of B-40 to provide electric service to the home. I would recommend that the board approve of this request.
Motion by Whacter, second by Stecker. Discussion. Now, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Oh, I don't say no. That's just your motion.
A little bit too fast. Or I'm slow, one of the two.
Just the one there. Okay.
Just.
Yep.
All right. Anything else right away?
Uh, there is no other requests.
Okay. Discussion then?
The pavement, we still are talking with the prime contractor about some of the traffic marking. They did come up over the weekend and completed some. However, there's more errors on that. So we are continuing to talk with the contractor about that. Godverson Smith, the bridge construction north of Sexton, they are working on their barrier rail. In fact, they're pouring one side of it. They were supposed to start at ten-thirty. They may have the concrete in time. Iowa DOT construction, they got Highway eighteen closed. I think they're going to be resurfacing soon, I believe. The plant may be set up over in Hancock County's Hutchins Pit over there. And it looks like the plant is ready to start operating. Railroad crossing work, I did talk to Carter or texted Carter. There was some railroad crossings down in the southeast corner of Cassuth County. It'd be a line, Union Pacific running from Addison to West Band. The railroad has two of the four crossings completed, is my understanding. They have one that is open right now, one that's closed, I should say. The rail works seven days on and seven days off. So they will be back next Tuesday to get the one that is closed, one that is not able to drive over. That should be completed first and then they have one more to complete in Cassuth County. Then they're moving, continuing northwest. Bridge funding. Talked a little bit about it. We had a bridge that was going to be included in a grant. Some of the counties and the Iowa County Engineers Association Service Bureau grant people started discussing that. We learned that the Department of Transportation is applying for a multi-million dollar project out of the same grant. Sioux City is applying for a multi-million dollar project out of the same grant. And Iowa City is applying for a multi-million dollar project out of the same grant. All states are limited to a certain dollar amount. I can't remember exactly what it was. Having said that, there's going to be three, three multi-million dollar projects being submitted. We did not feel our grant was going to be attractive. So instead of spending the money to develop the grant, we decided to cancel it for now. Next year, there should be the CHBP, which kind of bundles everything together. And all of these bridges will be eligible for that. And we feel that might be one of the stronger ways that we can get money. So we talked a little bit about that. We decided not to do it, but we're going to try next year.
Which bridge was that on?
That was a bridge that would be west and south of Michelson Marsh.
What was the cost on that? Was that seven hundred?
Oh, it's a million, one point one. The total cost, I think, was our estimation, estimated.
So ours is over a million. Why did you feel that ours wouldn't be attractive?
Well, this was all the counties. It's just the competitiveness of the grant and the limit of the grants per state. We just did not feel the qualifications. I, I did read the notice of funding opportunity, so I, I don't know exactly what some of the major qualifications were. The grant coordinator for the Iowa County Engineers Service Bureau, she felt that with the bridges, the two cities in the state, their bridges, their grant would be a stronger application than the county's grant. And it was going to cost, it was a pretty substantial amount to get the grant put together for all the counties. There's thirteen or fourteen counties. It was going to cost pretty substantial to get that. So we just felt we wouldn't spend the money with that.
And that's paying the grant writer with the association?
No, actually it would have been, I think it was Kim Lee Horn was going to be writing the grant. We'd have to hire a consulting firm to put that together. Still working on the comprehensive plan with the Cassuth Waste Management Association. People probably see that recycling bins, the access to the lot is back, so it's business as usual there. So that's kind of everything that I have.
Anything else for Doug?
Thank you. You bet. Thank you.
Have a good week.
You too.
Discussion with the county.
Next week, we have a closed session with Bob Goodwin for some litigation. And possibility of adding in-house drainage engineer. So far, that's all I have on the calendar. Checking to see if we have an update on DD sixty, sub four, has rightsals been up there?
I believe they have finished what they're going to do. Tyler called me about that on Thursday or Friday. And said that, I think it was, yeah, I think it was end of this last week, said that they were done up there. But at the time we were in the field, Dustin Goraskowski had asked if we would go through it at the end. And we have not done that yet, so that will be coming soon probably. But supposedly the work is complete. And then we can have a conversation about the retention or any potential changes there or plot of changes.
So in my perfect dream world all the time, can those two come to an agreement?
We can ask that.
Do that. What do you guys think? I mean, seriously?
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, you're right.
No, it's going to come down to us.
It's going to come down to us, but if, if they.
Be nice if they could.
If they agree on the front side, it would take the pressure off of us.
That's right. And plus, they're the ones with all the information.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's only it.
Lean on.
Okay.
Howard?
Howard, any board reports?
Not a bit. No. I recognize that there's a part of that meeting that's a little bit very.
Thursday, yes.
Nine?
Amber?
And how many meetings or anything? But I did have one question about, I just want a clarification, if somebody can help me clarify that. On the DI numbers, what does a DI number mean for FEMA?
Damage inventory.
Yeah. But what does it mean? Like, do they, when they take, how do they assign the damage inventory numbers?
How do they assign them?
Yeah, do you know?
I mean, based on what, like, we've sent them repair requests, for example, and then they'll assign a DI number that's tied with the usually references township section and description of work and stuff, I mean.
So the DI numbers are kind of tied to the request and the invoices for those?
Yeah, getting, seeing where they're tied can maybe be complicated as, but yeah, they, they should all be correlated in a way.
So then when certain, I am just trying to clarify my own brain. So when, when this lump sum was not approved by FEMA and the one that we're waiting for, the dollar amount we're waiting for, was that tied to certain DI numbers?
So the whole project has an entire list of DI numbers and they, they issued a determination memo, which is the term for it. And they basically said, we'll pay you what's obligated, but not anything above that. So we're appealing the determination memo. It's not that, but it does not call out this DI number or this DI number is wrong. It's the whole project.
Okay. All right. That's what I was curious about. We're trying to understand better, I should say.
You don't understand all of them yet?
No. Well, no, because there's just been some questions.
No, I just.
No, I know, but there's, there's still further questions, you know, that I'm receiving and drawing for. And I just want to make sure if I can answer them, I'm going to answer them. I, but I kind of need to understand things a little bit better and all of that could have been stated. But sometimes, you know, it's just when it's a little bit, when you're not involved in it from the beginning, it gets to be a little bit above your head. And I mean, I just want to understand it and understand what we still have coming to us, you know? I want to understand the whys. It was appealed and, or denied and then appealed. I just want to understand that a little bit better. So that I can answer the questions in regards to invoices, invoices that are still out there that probably we've already paid, maybe. They've all, yeah, and they've all been paid.
Everything.
But they haven't all been redeemed.
Everything that's been submitted to FEMA has been paid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By stamp warrant anyways.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah. Just trying to understand if they separate that out at all.
Not really.
They didn't in the report they sent.
Is there any kind of a, when we were denied by FEMA, do we have any kind of a letter saying that we were denied?
Yeah, the determination.
And I have given that out to many people that have asked for it.
Okay, all right. And that doesn't list a dollar amount?
It lists a dollar amount, but, but not.
The numbers. Okay.
Except the three that were not fixed.
Right, those were the ones that were in Rogers District or whatever that.
That were never.
That we ever done anyway.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, really, there's no way to contest that. We didn't do the work, so we shouldn't be paid for it. It's pretty simple.
Yeah.
And I think there is an email sent to FEMA or somebody with FEMA. And she responded the same that, that it's a dollar amount that's disapproved, not an amount per.
The state has said that.
Yeah.
There was an email. Who was it sent to?
I think Vince Johnson was the one that sent it to FEMA and then she responded, copied me and it and a couple other people.
Okay. Have we, have we went through the process to change, because I know that March was a contact for FEMA?
Leon.
Has that been changed?
When Leon was here, he said that he was going to help us change that and Jennifer was checking with him yesterday. I don't, again, and I don't know if she heard anything back from him.
Okay. All right. That, that's all.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
Actually, along the lines of FEMA, the NAGO newsletter came out just this morning during our meeting at nine o'clock. The first headline is bipartisan FEMA reform bill advances the House floor. And it has, it's at the marking of a major step forward for long-sought disaster reform. As county-aligned reforms where the bill, which responds directly to county feedback, especially to NAGO, would convert FEMA's public assistance program to a grant-based model to ensure fund dispersment within a hundred and twenty days of a disaster and establishing universal disaster application. Structural changes, the bill proposes moving FEMA out from under the Department of Homeland Security and re-establishing it as a cabinet-level agency. The FEMA Act would also require states to identify at least one pre-approved mitigation project in every county. And for next steps, it says the bill now weighs full House and Senate considerations. And counties are encouraged to continue advocacy to ensure final access.
I didn't get that.
No, I, I get it for being involved with NAGO.
I managed to get it too.
You did.
Have you signed up for some?
I must have.
Oh, you, you were on the pass for.
Isn't the county having a membership to NAGO?
Yeah, we do.
Yes, we think so.
Oh, why don't we all get like an email from NAGO then?
I would have gotten it for my involvement in meetings and stuff, but I know we've paid for a membership for decades. But I don't know that anybody had really received that information or been part of the conversation previously. I don't know if there, I mean, I can forward this to you or give you contact.
Yeah, if we all.
Fixing emergency management.
I mean, that obviously is something that, you know, affects us.
I don't know, there's, I know there's people on the membership committee that could probably get people added to email lists or whatever. But I guess I've gotten it from involvement. And then I need to talk about the rest of things. So that's, that's all I got.
Okay.
Tended the NICO board of directors meeting last night, went over numbers, financial numbers. Pretty much from April to end of July, so I won't bore you guys with all the numbers. If you want to see the, the numbers of, for assets and revenue and expense, I can share those with you. Then after the treasurer's report, we had a presentation. Alex Lee with Iowa Public Information Board just kind of did a presentation on open, open meetings laws and, and just kind of verified some stuff there and just some training on that. They also discussed, he did bring up that they are working on some training for that new bill that came out the House. It was a House file, seven oh six.
Or two, I think. I don't remember.
That requires anybody appointed or elected after July, was it July first?
Yeah.
That they have to attend. So they're working on doing some.
If they're a member of a governmental body.
Yes, yes. And so they're working on, which I found out, it's just a two-person, the ICUP is just two people.
No, it's not.
No, it isn't.
That, the, okay, so what he said was.
They have a board and everything.
Right, right.
There's probably fifteen to twenty in there.
How old is the information board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, I think you're talking employees.
Yeah.
Because they're down, they are down employees right now. And you're right, there's only two people right now.
So there, there's the board and then there's the, the. So, there, there's the board, and then there's the, the, um, the people that work in the, they have an office and.
Executive director, I don't know who's, who or what they have under them, but yeah, the actual board is probably fifteen to twenty.
Right, right.
Off the top of my head.
So, what he was saying is, you know, because it's two of them that are doing the regular work and stuff like that, that, you know, they've got a lot of stuff going on right now because they're having to come up with, you know, working on all these trainings and stuffs. And they're working on certifying, yeah.
They have a lot of resources for that before, though. They had a presentation and stuff on their website that they've had for a while.
Which they do, but with the new requirements of having to officially attend and have record of it. Um, they're trying to do some catch-up on that right now, which they have a list of certified trainers and, and, uh, just for reference, they did say that, um, Hallers and Cooney is a certified trainer, so we can use them for any future, you know, appointments, elections and stuff like that for, uh, board members and other government entities, so. Other than that, wasn't really a whole lot of other, other information discussed, so. I didn't have any other meetings.
Well, I had no meetings the past week.
No, on vacation.
No, yeah. Uh, I've got my first de-cap meeting in my time in office coming up, uh, next Monday, so.
It's de-cap.
It's, uh, I don't know, I'll tell you after Monday.
I would wait for that.
Where?
You know, Howard, I really don't know. Uh, it's, it's a, it's in Esteville. I think I might do it by Zoom, but, um, it's, yeah, next Monday. But, uh, it's like a funding, they dish out state funding for, uh, I think it's tied with juvenile stuff, but, um.
Not directly.
Not directly, but, but.
We, we.
It's got, I, I don't know, it's a state funding dish out. I'll tell you more after Monday.
I can't tell you the exact programs that they encompass, we do.
Cause I even tried looking them up online, it's hard.
It's new or?
No.
No, no, it, it's been there a long time.
They meet everyone, once every four years, or something like that, cause I don't remember, who was on it before you? Wasn't that Roger?
No, Galen was on it before me. Uh, Galen Casey was on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think he only ever had one or two in his time too. I mean, they, they don't meet very often.
When I talked to him, when I was on it for a while.
And maybe she was, yeah, but she would've gotten off. It was quite a while, probably, yeah, eight or nine years ago, yeah. But, anyways, we got that coming up. Um, and then, oh, and John Emswiler sent me a, an email and said, would you please share this at tomorrow's meeting, please? Uh, this is for Moving Veterans Forward. It's grand opening for the Cassuth County Veterans Center at their new headquarters at one oh nine South Land Tree. That's this Thursday, the eleventh at ten o'clock, so. I shared that with.
I missed the mobile number.
Yeah, yeah.
Your attention.
Yeah. And they've been working on that for a while, too. But other than that, I have, I don't think I have anything else. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Stecker?
I'll second.
Second by Wacker, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned at eleven forty-eight.
What time did you say that was, that, that moving?
Ten o'clock in the morning on Thursday.
Yeah, it's ten o'clock meeting, but that would still be open.
It does not have an end time.